Welcome, everybody. My name is Steve Ward. I am the chair-elect for the HEB Chamber of Commerce and also an alternate agent, Perry Bedford. So, with the lack of a vote for everyone, thank you for attending. And before we get started, I'd like to do one thing, and that's just to mention that tonight's event is being recorded. We'd like to post it on Facebook, on YouTube, and on the HEB Chamber of Commerce website. So, just want to ensure that there are no objections to us recording this. If there are, at some point, say something.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to take a minute and just acknowledge some of the elected officials that are here tonight but that are not running for office. We've got Mayor Jim Grit from Bedford. We have Louis Linda Martin. We've got Michelle Ross with the HEB ISD. Cindy Shepherd with the City of Hurst. And Matt Romero with HEB ISD. Okay, so, tonight's format is going to consist of, I'm going to introduce all the candidates. I'm going to have each one of them, that's an opposed candidate, make an opening statement, and then there'll be some time for about two or three questions for each of the opposed candidates. The questions came from the HEB Chamber members during the past month or so. We've given them the opportunity to ask questions, write their information down, and that's what we brought tonight for the questions. They'll see what's going to be used for the forum today. All of the candidates in each of the races are going to be asked the same question. So, if you're in Ulyss, for example, you're going to be asked the certain same questions for each race, for each place, the City of Bedford. They may have separate questions, but those will be the same questions for the City of Bedford, for the town, and so on. You'll have one minute to answer each of the questions, but before that, you'll have an opportunity for, you have two minutes, to give opening statements. Just to let everyone know, I am not a member, I don't live here in Bedford. I live in Fort Worth, but I have a business here in Bedford. So, I'll be the moderator. Kimberly Paul is going to be our timekeeper. She's the same way. She has a business here in Bedford, but she does not live here. So, neither one of us have a dog in the hunt. We're just here to help with some of these issues. So, what I can do first is, I'd like to introduce each of the candidates. So, when I call your name, you'll please stand. For the City of Ulyss, the City Council, for special election place four, Perry Lyman. And Jared Hanhart. City Council for Bedford, we have Amy Sable. And we have Don Coates. For place five, we have Booth Culver. Okay, for the City Council for Hurst, place one, we have David Dooley. Place two, Larry Kitchens. Place six, we have John McKenzie. Mike Inoffe. For the HEB ISD, place one, we actually have. For place six, we have Andy Cargill. And Kristi Hanhart for place six. For place seven, we have Craig Combs. And for place seven, we have Ayesha Ocha. Okay, at this point, what we're going to do is, we'd like to take our opening statements from each of the opposed candidates, but because we have all three cities present, and we have council meetings that are scheduled at different times, we want to take that into consideration and start with the ones that have already been exposed, so that they can go to their council meetings. So, our order tonight's going to be Ulyss, followed by Bedford, then Hurst, and then HEB ISD for opening statements, which will be for two minutes, and then for each question, you'll have one minute to respond. Alright, so, for the candidates for City Council for Ulyss, for special election for place four, first, we have Perry Lyman.
First of all, thank y'all for being here. It's very important, I think, for people to hear from us, folks who are running for offices. A little bit about myself, my name is Perry Lyman, born and raised in Ulyss. I went to the schools of HEB, Woodbank Park School, the Junior High, and Union High School. Been married to my maiden wife, Perry Lyman, for thirty-seven years, been together for forty-one years. I have two amazing kids, Josh thirty-four, and Lacy thirty-three, three grandkids. And that's pretty much foundational for us, for people in our community. Concerning the city of Ulyss, I was only council, and last year I rolled off the council. I didn't run for reelection last year. I was a fire chief at that time. And through that, being a fire chief, and probably a council member, in several of those communities completely, I didn't feel like I could do that, so I rolled off council last year. This year, then I felt stepped down, and I was asked, and feel bad after I prayed through this, offered my life, to run for council. So, that's the reason I'm stepping down from council this year. And for the city of Ulyss, I think the city of Ulyss is in a great place. We're moving forward, we have great managers, you've done a great job leading our council. Our city's positioned in a great, great place as our community grows. Issues for the city of Ulyss, obviously, the same issues that all cities are going to have, and that's going to be water. I believe that's going to be the elephant in the room, that we need waters. And I think all cities are having to deal with that, so things that are important, being public safety, obviously, that's what I stand for. I think that's the challenge that we're always used to, to maintain that. So, that's my short, sweet, and as I always said, Perry, you can long talk and talk and so step down, so thank y'all for being here, I appreciate you.
Thank you. And next, for Bill Posenmark, Jared Hanhart.
Those of y'all that don't have this, I'm going to say right away, this is a special one, I have a lot going on. My name's Jared Hanhart, and I've been in Ulyss for about a decade now. My wife and I, we've been together for, what, thirteen years now? I went to high school in Mansville, went to the Navy, been, spent a lot of time in Florida. We have two kids that are in the school system right now, both teenagers. One goes to Central Junior High, one goes to Trinity High School. Mine'll be a lot shorter than Perry's, so. One of my main concerns is, is there's a lot of economic diversity in the city of Ulyss, and there's a large age diversity as well, and I just kind of feel like I was pulled towards trying to represent the people that I would see represented in the city council, just because I live in an area that's all renters, and just a different perspective, young families, and just try to focus on what matters to them. So, whether it's park systems, whether it's road rehabilitation, whether it's how's the crime prevention going around the schools, what are kids doing to keep them occupied, especially when they're out and about on the streets? So, just a lot of things that matter to young families, and the fact that Ulyss has trended younger, I think it's important that there's some sort of representation that a lot of people, people feel like they can relate to a lot of stuff on the council. So, that's about it, so.
So, I'm going to start with the first question for the Ulyss City Council, and Jared, you'll have the first question. Okay? Then if you'd like to come back up to the mic to respond, you can, or you can stay there. The first question is, give us two specific examples of how your connections and influence within the community will be an asset to the city if you're elected. One minute.
As far as my connection to the city, my wife and I have been involved in schools a long, long time, especially with volunteer work with our students, and with, especially, like I said, younger families, it's like we live in an area where we connect with a lot of people, and through our knocking doors and talking to a lot of the citizens, they feel like they're kind of ostracized, and they don't see sort of representation that they can approach, or feel like they can draw them into the voting process, or into having a sort of impact on the council.
Alright, and Perry, the same question goes to you.
Will you repeat the question?
Sure.
Give us two specific examples of how your connections and influence within the community will be an asset to the city if you're elected.
Two examples, two examples of my history, being born and raised in Ulyss. I remember where Ulyss, where it was, when I was a kid, I grew up there. So, I know where we were, and where we are today, and I think I know where we're headed. So, I believe that's definitely something that's good for our city. A second example is, I understand how the employees feel. I was in a employee for another city for thirty years, so I bring that connection. So, I understand both issues on both sides of the darts, so that's how I answer both of the questions.
Okay. And actually, you had the first question, your first, I'll answer this next question. The question is, what are your qualifications and or experience with municipal operations?
Well, I've retired from a fire department, thirty years working for a city, so that's a great new experience. So, I understand the budget process from both sides of the darts, and that's really helped me greatly in my career as a fire chief, so I understand the processes. So, with that ability, I bring a lot to the table, so I think that's huge.
Okay. And Jared, same question. What are your qualifications and or experience with municipal operations?
As far as municipal operations, I'm novice, so it's a, I'm the first to admit that. But I'm a great contributor, but my wife and I've run a business in the city for over a decade now, and we've worked with that members' employees, managed, out of time budget, we've managed local budgets. I've got experience on working in a leadership position with the diocese of Fort Worth for the Episcopal Church, so I've, for one of their huge operations right there, which includes all the churches, as far as I lay moving forward, so. And I'm also a delegate member of the church as well, so for the conference.
Alright, thank you. Okay, and the last question for the city of Ulyss, Jared will respond first to this one. The question is, what are the advantages of remaining three separate cities instead of parking in the one city?
That's a good question. I see that as, these three cities have a separate sort of need. As far as Bedford, they have a lot of departments, they're really trying not to push more of that, they've built out, they're very small. Ulyss is growing and expanding, has a lot of land that can still be used, so there's a huge potential for where the city of Ulyss can continue to move forward. And I would say the same thing for Hurst. Hurst is a large city as well, it continues to push out, uses conference centers, hotels, all the proximity to the airports. A huge city has a different thing to offer.
Alright, and Perry, same question. What are the advantages of remaining three separate cities instead of parking in the one city?
We see it has its own identity, its own history. I think it's important to maintain that, but I do believe all three cities are starting to combine some of our city services in different ways. We see that public safety, from the fire thing side, we're able to run this way, we're able to use different cadence, dispatch. We share a lot of different things. CPR's been a great project for all three cities, so, yeah, we're three separate cities, but I think we drive together economically, I think that's huge. Our school district feels the impact of the three cities, so I think that's another great example, keep the cities separate, and then, but in the same token, we have a drive for all three cities.
Thank you very much. Alright, now we're going to move on to the city of Bedford, City Council, so if you would, if I called your name, it's hopefully more, it's a good thing.
Thank you for having us tonight. The chamber serves a great service to the community, and the business community especially. I believe that Bedford's in the middle of a metroplex, and we've only got the two percent of our land left to develop, so we have to be very careful in how we develop that last two percent. I don't believe in settling for just any type of project, I think it has to be the right project for Bedford. Not only that, I believe that when, I have ideas, and I think that we don't want to be the town that people cross here to go to the other side, and go to Hurst, Ulyss, sounds like a great time. At this point, I think that we should start a little Bedford school property, I think can have meetings, events, and productions there, not just a wedding venue. We need more sales tax, because we depend on it, our property taxes are quite high, but we have to have a preferred buyer place and infrastructure. I believe in monitoring and measuring and evaluating everything we do, and when I'm re-elected, I will insist on following the Lumbdavid project. Please listen to me, email me and call me, and I would love to see the city of Bedford move forward. Thank you.
And also for the City Council of Bedford, place three, Don Coates.
Thank you. I said, I wore my few things tonight. I asked Andy if I could get a lot of that attire, he said, no. I don't know how to pull that off, but I'll try. Anyway, I've been in Bedford since nineteen eighty-four, raised six kids, five to build. Had three businesses, started from scratch, been the HLA president, been a lay pastor of a church that started at the storefront, then ended up building a million-dollar structure over in Bedford. And we lived in Bedford, and we shared money in Bedford, and we all see that sometimes churches and storefronts can be a good thing. Maybe God needs invitations sometimes, to come into a property that's not looking so good. So, we started Bel Air Shopping Center, and then we moved out, and that shopping center filled up with business. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's not in all the churchy things, but I've been, my budget, I've done budgets for my businesses, for the church, for another business that somebody else owned, that they did help with, and raising six kids, I don't have a stretch of time to talk, so that's kind of where I'm coming from. So, I like my mayor, Mayor Jim Grit, and I think that we need to, he's smiling. Anyway, so now that the economic development in Bedford, I saw that up until two years ago, we had a lot of development, nice stuff going on. Two years ago, it stopped, and the city manager said that maybe in two weeks' time, in two years, we don't pass one economic development project in the city of Bedford. Something wrong with that. I mean, they're all there, so I would hope to be on the council, and provide at least a yes vote every once in a while, to get this city, not only just going forward, but just holding its own. Okay?
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to do a quick, we introduce a couple of members that were not introduced earlier. Roger Fisher with the City of Bedford. And Kathy Council, her City Council. Okay, so, for the Bedford City Council, place three, first question is going to go to Don Coates. Don, question is, the council has had trouble, you just mentioned this, the council has had trouble getting anything done to advance business in the city, what can you bring to create a more cohesive council?
Well, my business is raising children, I want to have cooperation, and communicate, and be consistent. So, the raising kids, you've got to be consistent, I've got great kids, six productive, wonderful kids. I see, I see in the city council here, is what I've observed and heard from the staff, it's almost a jekyll and Hyde sometimes, I don't know exactly where it's going. I think I can provide cooperation first of all. You can't just be hard-headed, and have your agenda, and not move from there. There's too much at stake in the city, so I can communicate, I can cooperate, and be consistent.
Okay, and Amy, same question. Question is, council has had trouble getting anything done to advance business in the city, what can you bring to create a more cohesive council?
It's a misstatement to say that we haven't passed anything in two years. We've passed several things through, including a hotel, we've expanded PolyCo, there's several expansions that we've done, and we opened a daycare, I passed a church through, so it's a misstatement. I believe that as a city, we need to have quality development, I think I said that before, and in doing so, I think that people coming to us will become aware of what type of developments we want, that's my opinion.
Okay. And the second question goes, Amy, goes to you. The second question is, what is your position on new hotels being built in the city?
If they're a quality hotel, I don't have a problem, but having said that, the one we turned down was an extended stead, that when she checked in, rented the pots, pans, utensils, and sheets. And then the second one that I turned down was a one that referred to their restaurant, when it was a churn, it was a vending machine, they had vending machines as their restaurant. So, I didn't like that type of hotel, not, but it was like a state bridge, which is like what we approved, I would be fine with that. It's just the quality of the hotel, we don't need inexpensive hotels in Bedford. Thank you.
Okay, and Don, same question.
Well, I feel the same way, if it's a quality hotel, I think that we're not hotel out, as some people have said. Hotels usually do their homework on where they want to go, if there's a market for it, they'll come to your city. People come to stay at hotels, statistics show they eat there, they shop there, and they visit all the motel establishments in the city where they, where they have their hotel room. So, I think we aren't hotel out, and I would invite them.
Alright, and question three, don't start on the E, so I'll go ahead and finish, starting this, but how do you feel about multifamily housing?
Good question. Well, nobody likes apartments. I like lofts, I like townhomes. The millennials, my son and his wife made a couple hundred grand here, for five years, they lived in a two-thousand-dollar-a-month apartment over in Dallas, very upscale, a lot of business going on in there, a lot of snotty bits, and they weren't ready to buy the half-million-dollar house, which is kind of where it lies now, this time. So, I think, well, the family, even though we've got a lot of apartments, I think we need to upscale that. I have a lot of older apartments in Bedford, and they can always be revitalized, whether that's tearing them down, or redoing, or making them condos. Thank you.
Alright, same question.
We have nine thousand apartments in Bedford, and I don't, I don't have a problem with the people that live in there or anything, I just think that they need to revitalize. As far as new apartments being built, we just passed an ordinance that says that it controls the density. We were the experiment in the eighties for apartments that should have brought business to us, it did not, and so my opinion is, we don't need anymore, but if it's a multifamily owner-occupied facility, a townhome, a condo, I'm all for that, and I think that could be happening in Bedford, Tom. Thank you.
Amy, very much. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to Hurst.
I'm surprised David didn't come up and start talking. I want to say thank you, thank you to the chamber for having this event. Appreciate the chamber and all it's done, the members, their leadership, their various businesses and organizations in our community, what you've had to the community. One of the things that I'm often asked is, am I enjoying my time on the council? There were three of us who were elected as new members of the city council last year, and when I'm asked that question, I say absolutely. It's a great opportunity to serve the citizens, to give back to my community. I'm not saying that there aren't tough things that come along, tough decisions that have to be made, but what's nice in the council is that we work together as a team, we have a professional staff, and we find solutions to the top problems. We work together to make decisions that are best for our city and for the citizens. Some of the things I've learned along the way, it's a great commitment to serve on the council. You have to spend lots of time out in the community, listening to citizens, interacting with folks, researching the issues that are at hand, of course, attending all the council meetings and work sessions that we have, to plan out things for the city. Of course, we've attended multiple training events for local elected officials, various seminars, lots of charity events. There are so many good things going on in our community, and it's been exciting to be a part of it so far. I am thankful to have a supportive spouse, to have a supportive family, to have a church where I minister, that's supportive of my work in the community, and so all those things allow me to participate in these activities with the city. I've enjoyed using my professional experiences, my education and perspective as a father, as a husband, active in schools, to help the city, to help influence decisions for the city council, to have my input. I believe I've proven myself as responsible, active, involved member of the city council. I appreciate your support in reelections.
And now for opening statements, also place six, Micah Noble.
Campaign time is a time of questions. Before casting your votes, you're inspecting us, seeing where we stand on issues. You want to know why we decided to run for office, and how we plan to keep taxes down? Open questions. Recently, though, two particular questions surprised me. Why haven't I put signs in the empty fields around town, and why haven't I been knocking on doors? They're simple questions, but something about them forced me to take a step back, to fully clarify the specific reason for doing the things I choose to do or not to do in my campaign. When setting out to share that reason, I realized it involved more than just giving the simple answer, because we're dealing with my own personal beliefs and motivations, like a guiding principle, establishing what I consider as appropriate behavior as a citizen, and hopefully as a council member. The answer I found is respect. I respect this city enough not to add to the clutter that I already see lining our city streets. Every day I see far too many signs, now pipeline, Bedford-Ulyss, Highway Ten, vacant lots and commercial spaces, with signs posted for sale, for lease. I've been up for a while, and adding my sign would only add to the eyesore, and I respect our city too much to do that. As far as knocking on doors, I respect this city's residents, each of you. I respect you enough to not invade your privacy, or interrupt your time at home, plus going door-to-door makes me a solicitor, not a council member. And if elected, that's not how I want you to remember the beginning of our relationship. It's this same respect that necessitates my platform with pursuing a more efficient local government. It's this same respect that's resulted in countless hours of correspondence with city residents concerning issues that are important to them. Hopefully, it is this respect that compels me to ask for your vote in this election. I'm Micah Noble for place six, Hurst City Council. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we have three questions for the Hurst City Council, and I think we're going to start with you. First question, what have you done in the community that would make you a great council member, or continue to serve on the council?
Well, for those of you that may know my past work and experience, I have worked actually for Ulyss and for Bedford, I spent nearly a decade in law enforcement. So, I understand some of the budget process, but I'm also familiar with a lot of the waste and inefficiencies that occur within government operations. As far as within the community, you may not be aware also, but I also spent three years in ministry, pastoring a church, I worked as a youth director, associate pastor, had a full-time pastor at a one-point. So, I have worked with the community, helped fulfilling those needs, whether it be food bank, or providing clothes, those types of services. Aside from that, yeah, I have management experience, supervision experience, to help in that aspect.
Thank you very much. Okay, and John, same question. What have you done in the community that would make you a great council member, or continue to serve on the council?
I think over the last year, I've proven my willingness to be out in the community, attending events with both the HEB ISD, and also the Birdville ISD, numerous charities, chamber events, all these different activities to get to know what's going on. Attending all sorts of different activities that are put on by citizen groups, and being out there, and being visible. One of the things that we also value as a family is our time that we spend over at Chayyoke's, where our girls go to school. I'm the PTA president, in my second year as PTA president, and I've learned a lot about the schools and the school district, the way that the city and the schools work together, and the opportunities that are there. So, we believe very much in being active and giving back to our community.
Thank you very much, and for question two, John, you're going to start us off with that one. What is your plan to continue to grow the tax base to bring more revenue, to build or improve Hurst infrastructure?
Of course, sales tax is one of the things that helps to offset the rising property taxes, and everybody looks down to Northeast Mall. Northeast Mall does generate a substantial amount of sales tax base for the city, and we have an economic development team with the city that works hard to bring in new businesses, to make sure that the businesses that we're doing, we have, are doing well. We're constantly encouraging our businesses. I like to personally go and visit our smaller businesses, and interact with folks, like Rip down at Artisan, or Moe down at Moe Zero, all these small businesses that make Hurst a special place to be. And so, again, it's about being out there, doing business in Hurst, shopping first in Hurst.
Hurst.
Okay, thank you very much. And then Mike, same question.
Did you repeat the question?
Sure. Question is, what is your plan to continue to grow the tax base to bring more revenue to build or improve Hurst infrastructure?
Well, as Kathy mentioned, the tax base in Northeast Mall obviously is a huge asset to the city. We have lost several large businesses over the last few years, and speaking with the director of economic development, he said it's a possibility that we could lose more, but they do have some contingency plans that the city artists and the Simon Property Group are willing to pursue. When I'm thinking about the new businesses that I have seen open up over the last couple of years, there's some of them that I don't necessarily know exactly how I feel about them, but I would ask the question, tattoo parlors, smoke shops, things of that nature, do they provide our residents with meaningful employment? Something I would like to pursue would be something along the lines of another bell helicopter for Hurst. I know we're almost built out, and we don't have a whole lot of space for it, but that type of employment can change a person's life, and I believe that as a city, those are the type of employment opportunities we need to be pursuing for our residents.
Okay, and for question three, Michael, we're going to start with you for question three, and that is, what are your qualifications or experience with municipal operations?
Well, as I briefly mentioned before, I spent a little over three years at Ulysses Police Department, a little over six years at the Bedford Police Department. In that time, I worked patrol, traffic on motorcycle, I was a van accident investigator, reconstructionist, also taught the citizens police academy, and served on the Bedford SWAT team. So as far as understanding the municipal operations, primarily my background lends itself to the public safety sector, but as I mentioned, I do understand there's a lot of waste and inefficiency that takes place within that operation. I believe that probably one of the most underutilized assets that we have within municipal operations is our downtime, and I think we should be doing more with our downtime in government operations. There were days I remember when we didn't have any calls for service, not a whole lot going on, we did absolutely nothing, and that was just the status quo, that's how things operate. If we utilize that time, we can develop, say, within our street departments or whatever the division may be.
I want to hear it, so same question. What are your qualifications or experience with municipal operations?
Again, it's similar to the response to the first question, the experience I have with the city council. One of the things I've seen specifically here in person is the quality of our professional staff. Professional staff that's always aiming at a conservative budgeting process, making sure that tax dollars are spent carefully, the time is managed wisely. We have a group of professionals who are highly skilled, who do an excellent job for our citizens, and use the tax funds that come into this community very wisely. It is a true privilege to get the knowledge and experience and education from these folks who have worked and trained and have, you know, college degrees, masters, and higher levels of experience, working with cities and managing a city very well, so all of the citizens benefit.
Thanks very much. This time, I'd like to ask that each of the city council candidates make a one-minute closing statement, and we will go in the same order that we went, so for the city of Ulysses.
Hey Steve, once again, thank y'all for being here. I close with the VBS. Go vote. That's, that's, that's our issue. We need to get people more involved, we need people out to vote. People ask me during, you know, what we need to, we need to vote. Regardless of how you feel about the candidates, go vote. That's our right as citizens of this great country, asking you to go vote, spread the word, get people out to vote. So thank you, thank you for your time.
And for city, Ulysses council for Ulysses, Perry?
As Perry said, thanks everybody for coming here today and giving us an opportunity to talk and try to explain what we'd like to do and which direction we'd like to see the cities go in. Perry made a good point, voting is very important, municipal elections tend to only have about one percent of registered voters that actually go out and vote, and that's, that's a major issue, because that makes it sound like only one percent of the population is making the decision on where the city goes. So make sure you encourage everybody you know to do the same, to go vote, and if they're not registered, encourage them for the next time, but make sure they're registered so they can. These are some of the most important positions right here, because they choose their tax plans going, so. Thanks, guys.
Okay, all right, and next to the closing statements for the city council for Bedford, Don Coates.
It's ladies first, it's just me. Anyway, I know this isn't a debate, but the city manager, our city manager tells me there's no economic development in the last two years. My councilwoman opponent says there has been. Is there a lack of communication on the council? Can I help communicate and get the facts in front of the people? I hope I could. Can I cooperate between the staff and the council so that they know what each other's doing? Hopefully I can do that. And I can be consistent. When I hear what I hear, I usually repeat what I hear, the way I hear it, and I've heard it twice for Brad Bossart, and that's all I can say. But I appreciate my opponent, she's a nice lady, and I really appreciate it, but thank you.
And closing statement for place three, city council, Bedford, same.
I agree, go vote, because I've sat in the parking lot for two days, and there's not enough voting. When I get involved, I really get involved, I do my job well. I again disagree with Brad Bossart or whoever said we haven't done anything in Bedford, but we have. Please come vote for me, I really care for our community. I watched the council for eight years before I joined council, so I really know what's going on with the residents, and I care about our community. Thank you.
Okay, and for the candidates for the city council for Hurst, place six, John Kennedy.
Thank you again for this opportunity, I'll echo the same sentiment that's been expressed, please go vote. We had seventy-nine people come in in person to vote in the Hurst election yesterday. I know it's just the first day of early voting, but historic turnout is usually pretty low. I also encourage you to go ahead and take time to, to research, not only myself, Mike has a website as well, both of our websites are names, so as long as you know our names, we're in good shape, but you can go out and, and read about both of us, but I hope that through my work on the council, what you've seen in the last year since I was elected, what you read and see about me on my website, that I will have earned your vote for place six of our city council. Thank you.
For Hurst city council, place six, closing statement, Michael.
Well, I'm confident when I say this evening that I think the citizens of Hurst have two very capable candidates for place six this year of the election. I'm also confident when I say that regardless of who wins and who loses, both of us will probably be active in the process again next year, and I'm confident that we can develop a relationship where whoever's on which side will be supporting each other's campaigns. As far as my top priority within government operations, if I haven't expressed it enough, yes, it is government efficiency, and it is creating a culture within that organization that literally pursues efficiency in every task that it undertakes. And the reason being is that the end goal should be to provide the highest quality, most effective public service at the lowest possible, not just a lower, but the lowest possible cost to the taxpayers. Thank you.